Business meeting is now called to order. Mary Beth, would you like to have some invite some special guests for us?
Yes, we have some very special guests today this evening with us. There are four sisters from Washington Elementary. Ladies, if you'd like to come up with me. Okay, and the girls with us today, if you want to raise your if you want to wave to the audience, okay. Ms. Lacy, she's in kindergarten. Do you want to wave and say hi? We have Ms. Avery, who's in first grade. Ms. Sadie, who's in second. And then last but not least, Ms. Kenzie, who's in fourth grade. Okay, so, girls, do you want to do you want to tell us a little bit about yourselves? Like what you like about Washington Elementary or who your favorite teacher is?
Art class.
Art class? What do you like about Mr. Dale's class?
Doing art.
Doing art? Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
I like art because I like making stuff.
You like making stuff? What's your favorite thing to make?
A pumpkin.
A pumpkin? That's awesome. Well, girls, do you want to share anything else or are you ready to say the Pledge of Allegiance? You ready? Okay, so let's turn around. If you come in front of me. Come on. Okay, and then face face the flag. And then on the count of three, we're going to start the pledge, okay? Okay, one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, girls. Okay, you can go ahead and sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. We appreciate you being here. Okay. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes, excuse me, I'll ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda, which, once the agenda is accepted, the board mutually agrees not to discuss any item of business or to take action that has not been accepted. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Cast your vote. Motion approved. At this time, we would like to begin our recognitions. It's we have some very, very significant recognitions tonight. Extremely proud. Dr. Hampton?
Good evening. It is my distinct honor to recognize a young lady who's a member of the Washington Elementary family and who is also a very talented student. At this time, with this being a foul, please come up to the front of the room.
Iz Arena's artwork has been selected as the feature artwork for the 2025 Kingsport City Schools Christmas card. We would like to congratulate Iz Arena on doing an excellent job as well as her art teacher at Washington, Mr. Dale. In addition to being recognized at tonight's board meeting, we would also like to present Iz Arena with 10 of our Christmas cards to present to her family and friends during this holiday season. We would also like to present to Iz Arena and her family a framed version of the card to serve as a keepsake in honor of this recognition. Congratulations Iz Arena and thank you for your beautiful and festive artwork.
Good job.
Man, all this cuteness is going to be tough. Who's Mr. David Frye? Is he here? Get on up here. You're not as cute as these girls, but. I'm going to brag on you for just a minute. It is my my honor to recognize Mr. Frye. He has been with KCS for quite some time. Joined in 91, 1991, and served as manager of fiscal affairs, taking on responsibilities for the budget development oversight, as well as the supervision of payroll and procurement operations. In 2013, you were named a CFO of KCS, a role in which you continue to occupy. But it is the most recent award that you received in all of the incredible work that you have done from T S B O., which is the Tennessee Association of School of Business Officials, where you were named as, let me make sure I get this correct, Outstanding Business Official of the Year for 2015, Mr. David Frye. And I can only imagine what it would mean to receive that award because I see the work that you've done for KCS. So the other schlubs that lost, they are just going to have to try harder, but I don't think they will ever meet up to what you've done.
All righty. I told Todd, all of us board members were fighting over giving that award to Mr. Frye. It was it's an honor to have him on on board with us. But now I have the distinct pleasure. Somebody's been coming up here for nine years talking about this award. So for the ninth consecutive year in a row, which is just blowing me away, Kingsport City Schools has achieved the top composite score of five in Tennessee's value-added assessment system. So if you've heard the term T V O S thrown around, again, and for the ninth consecutive year, we have scored five, the top score. During the 2024 school year, Kingsport City Schools scored a level five in, get ready, the areas of system-wide literacy, system-wide numeracy, system-wide literacy and numeracy. I guess there's a score that's separate than the two distinct, system-wide science and system-wide social studies. There's no other categories. So we have gotten a level five district-wide in every category. I'm so proud of that. And the overall system-wide composite score of five as well. If you're wondering, T V O S measured this measures the student growth year after year. So it's not necessarily completely related to the proficiency of the student. It's related to how is the student growing year after year? Are we seeing this student making gains, learning more than they did last year? And what we're seeing is not just regular growth, we're seeing exponential exceeding growth for our children in the in the Kingsport City Schools, which just blows me away again. So this is something to really be excited about. And so for the following schools, I have a certificate that I know our principals will be proudly displaying. So if you will come up and receive these, if you're here, for Adams Elementary, Jefferson Elementary. Here you go. Oop, I was going to say, there's a bunch of you, so are you Adams? Okay, thank you. Johnson, Kennedy, Lincoln. Is that you, Johnson? Okay, this is Kennedy. Right, yep, Kennedy. Johnson. And this is yours, so you are Lincoln. Yep, there you go. Thank you. Then I've got Roosevelt, Washington, and Sevier. Phillip. It's easier for me to do these in chunks. Thank you. Washington, thank you. Sevier, congratulations. I know that was a lot of hard work. And Dobbins Bennett, last but not least. Thanks, Dr. Tate. So having nine level-five schools represents an all-time high for KCS. And in any school that's not represented, it's still an amazing, high-performing school. So make no doubt that these were just the top five that are that are, I mean, the schools that are performing at five, but all of our schools are performing at and exceeding what the rest of the state is seeing. But we not not only district-wide, but we are also the consistent high-level growth that that means that it's taking place at each individual school at all grade levels. So please join me in applauding these schools and all of our districts for reaching such a great goal.
Hey, Mary Beth.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it on my list. D B X L.
Mary Beth, hang on just a second. There's you're missing one in the bag. Coach Statham needs to be up there with.
She's over there. Okay. I'm sorry.
With Jefferson.
staff, and our principals, administration, and all the way down to the teachers and instructional assistants, everybody, how hard they work to make things like that happen.
Mr. Marshall?
This year, I had the honor of representing or of presenting these certificates to the recipients of the reward schools. Seven Kingsport City Schools have been named among Tennessee's best this year, which is announced as a reward school by the Tennessee Department of Education. Each year, schools are recognized based recognized as reward schools when they demonstrate high levels of performance and/or improvement in performance by meeting objectives across performance indicators and student groups. And the reward school distinction places significant emphasis on performance and improvement across all indicators from the prior year. And these schools received this designation this year, or based on the 2024-2025 TCAP assessment. And also, just a point to this, this is the most reward schools in a single year in KCS history, which is awesome. So as I call your school, if you want to come up and grab the certificate and then just, I guess we'll go to the wall for Mary Beth, Adams Elementary, Johnson Elementary, Kennedy Elementary. I'm going to do like Ms. Jackson and bulk them together.
Make sure I got the right one. Lincoln Elementary, Roosevelt Elementary, and Washington Elementary. And last but not least, Dobbins Bennett. We're extremely proud of all these recognitions tonight, all of them. Thank you all so much for the hard work you do. We're going to give the audience just a couple of minutes, moments to exit if you'd like to. We're getting ready to get into some business, or you can stay. This is the time when members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda items. If pre-approved by the executive committee, members of the community may also address the board regarding non-agenda items. In order to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, per board policy, you must submit a written request to the superintendent of schools at least three days in advance before the regular meeting. This is not the time to speak about personnel issues, as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. If you're not sure how to do this, you can ask one of us board members after the meeting. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from a parent or a guardian. Speakers are requested to state your name and limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes. Okay, seeing none? All righty. Ms. Guthrie, would you like to start us off with some business? Some exciting news from for some of our professionals?
Good evening. It's a night of recognitions and celebrations, so I'm happy to add to that that we have a short but excellent list of teachers that to be recommended for tenure based on completion of last year, the 2024-25 school year. Those scores, level of effectiveness scores were released, so we have determined that the following are eligible. And just as a review of the eligibility for tenure, under statute, teachers have to have a degree from an approved four-year college, hold a valid teacher license in the state of Tennessee, completed a probationary period of five school years or not less than 45 months with the last within the last seven years and the last two of those being in a regular teaching position. In other words, not an interim, something of that nature, and have received evaluations demonstrating a level of overall effectiveness above expectations or significantly above expectations in those last two years. So those last two consecutive years. So and probably just as important, they have had at least five years of very rigorous work here in Kingsport and have been approved by our administrators to be recommended here tonight for tenure. We do, just to, I think you know this, but just as a reminder, also invite them, but we know it's it's an optional invite because we know that they have commitments in the evening, many of them doing extracurricular work and other things with our students in the evening. So if they are here, please stand for a moment and be recognized by our board. And that would be Catherine Little of John Adams Elementary, Julia Burke of Johnson Elementary, Shelby Davis Roosevelt Elementary, Nick Lowery, Dobbins Bennett, Maria Hannah, Jefferson Elementary, and Carrie Sensabaugh Robinson Middle School. So I certify to you that these teachers. Certify to you that these teachers have met all of the requirements to be eligible for tenure and present them to the board.
Any discussion? No. Okay. The recommendation is to prove this list of professional educators for tenure. Is there a motion to accept? Motion. Second. Let's cast your vote, please. Motion approved. Congratulations.
In in honor of Mr. Lowery's attendance tonight, I think we should get a picture of of him. And if Ms. if Ms. Lowery wants to come up, she can as well.
Yes, yes.
Is Hannah there? Oh, I didn't I didn't I didn't even see her. We definitely want.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have three or four items for your consideration this evening. The first of which is to consider a recommendation to change our phone provider. For the past several years, we have been working with Zayo Education LLC, and we're recommending that we switch that provider to United Data Technologies Incorporated. United Data Technologies is a member of the TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Contract. We're we're recommending to to make this change, number one, just due to cost savings. And it also actually provides us some enhanced features with our phone system. We're currently paying about $6,400 per month for our phone service, and this this cost is $5,733 per month, which is a cost savings of about $670 per month. And so we multiply that over 12 months and have about a little over $8,000 savings on an annual basis. It also gives us some a little bit more flexibility that we can we can manage the phone system in-house and don't have to rely on on the carrier to to do some of that work. It has a feature for pinpoint 911, which actually gives the location within the school of where of where the 911 is called is coming from. And it also has an integrated fax service with it, which we are currently paying a third-party provider for that. We're paying them $760 a month. This cost with United Data Technologies is $418 a month, which results in another $4,100 per save annual savings. So a total savings of about $12,000, a little over $12,000 a year to to switch our phone provider. We're looking at this spring break timeframe to to make this switch, so we would recommend the board approve this.
Any discussion, questions?
I would just recommend if 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 our technology people can do it, I would rather them do it any day than anyone else because I don't get complaints about technology, which means it's going really well because usually we only get complaints. So great job, and and if it's cost less, I think it's fantastic. So, yeah, great.
The recommended action is to change from the current voice phone provider to United Data Technologies Incorporated using TIPS USA Contract 230105. Is there a motion to accept? So moved.
Next item I have for you is our third budget amendment of the year. Excuse me. Two items on this budget amendment, both of them to fund architect agreements. The first one is for the Lynn Garden, the new Lynn Garden Elementary School, recommending that we appropriate $300,000 out of our unreserved fund balance. It's time to for us to enter into the second phase of the architect agreement for the design of that school with Thompson Litton. This second phase, phase one was for the schematic designs of the of the school as a whole. The second phase is for the design work and the bid specifications and the contract administration for the for the demolition of the community center that is located on the site, and also for the demolition of some other buildings associated with the football field and some outbuildings for the the baseball and or softball field that's that is currently there. So that would take care of all that. And for the design of some site work, the that design, there are some underground utilities that run underneath the current football field, which is the location of the school, where the school will be built. So those have to be relocated. The retainage pond will be designed and 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 the site work will be will happen in this phase. This is not all of the site work, but it's the majority of the site work to get the to get the building pad and all of that ready to do construction beginning in the summer of '27. So this work, we'll we'll plan on bidding this this phase of the work this summer and with it to be complete by the summer of '27. And at that time, we'll be able to 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 build a building on this on this site. There are some other sites, some some other services. The the base fee that's based on the 5.5% of our of our initial contract with Thompson Litton, which is 5.5% of the project cost, the base fee is $236,237.50. There's some additional services for surveying, geotechnical and subservice testing, environmental testing, bid administration, and some reimbursable expenses, which brings the total up to 268.7. And and I'm reckon we go recommending that we go ahead and appropriate $300,000, which will give us a little bit of flexibility in case there's some other expenses. If the if there's not the other expenses, obviously, we won't spend the money, and obviously, we're going to need more than $300,000 in this project when it's all said and done. This also, this money is coming from our unreserved fund balance, but when the when the city sells bonds for this project in the now, a portion of, well, we won't, we probably won't have any funding for this this part of it. The city is going to sell some bonds in probably February of this year, which will fund a portion of this work, basically the demolition of the building that's there. But when they sell the bonds in the summer of '27 for the overall project, will be reimbursed these funds at that time. The second item is. Yes, they're they're planning on, from from what I know now, they're planning on selling the the major bond issue to fund the construction of this building of this school will be in July of 2027. It'll be in fiscal year '28, but it'll be in July, which is July 1st begins that fiscal year. So that's that's the anticipated time that those bonds will be sold. And we're anticipating that about that time, we'll be out to bid, and we'll be coming back to award the bid for the construction of the school, probably in the August timeframe of '27, which will allow not quite a two-year timeframe for construction because we're going to need to be complete with construction probably in May of '29 in order to hit a August of '29 opening. The second item on this is to appropriate $50,000, again, out of our fund balance for the architect fees associated with the design, the bidding, and the in the project administration for the replacement of the Robinson Fire Alarm System. As far as I know, this fire alarm system was put in when we did the renovation of the of the of the school back in the mid-'90s. So this this fire alarm system is over 30 years old, and it's at the end of its life. This this, the fee, the base fee is is a 5% fee of construction cost not to exceed $37,500. So just to make sure that the board's informed, if you do the backwards math on that, at $37,500 would be 5% of a $750,000 project. Now, I must say, I think that's high, but I'll rephrase that and say, I hope that's high because I don't know, I don't I don't live in the fire alarm world. But I think that that's a that's that's a top number. I hope that the project comes in, and that's part of what this fee is going to pay for, is is coming up with a cost estimate for all of the the wiring that has to be. is coming up with a cost estimate for all of the wiring that has to be done. I mean, the system that's there has to be taken out, the control panel, the wiring, all of the end devices, voice enunciators, strobes, all of those types, all the alarms that go with this. So it's a complete replacement of the fire alarm system. So I've got my fingers crossed that the project comes in somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000. But there again, I mean, this is, as far as I know right now, this is a project that's going to have to be funded out of our fund balance. So when we get more money and we get closer to the time of bidding, I'll be back with another budget amendment to appropriate some additional funds. We're looking probably to send bids out in mid-February. They really haven't started the design of this yet, so that'll take a couple of months. Holidays are coming up, so opening bids in March and maybe be back to this board in April for a recommendation of a word of a contract with an anticipated completion date prior to the opening of the school in August of '26. So two items, appropriating a total of $350,000 out of our fund balance and transferring those funds into capital projects for the Lynn Garden Elementary School and the Robinson Fire Alarm Replacement.
Discussed all three of those. Do we need to break those up into three different motions? No?
We typically just approve the budget amendment.
Just do that as one budget amendment? Okay.
Was one of the Lynn Garden school designs actually accepted as of yet? There were three designs, and I think he said one of them was accepted. Is that correct? Okay, was not accepted. All right, thank you. Sorry.
Just do the I got you. All right. No questions, any further discussion, questions? All right, the recommended action is to accept the mo, excuse me, the recommended action is to accept the budget amendment number three for fiscal year 2026. Any questions, any further?
So moved.
Second. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Frye.
Two more. So, next two items, and I feel like I probably have discussed those items with the budget amendment. So the first item I've got for, the next time I have for you is the, is this the Robinson or the Lynn Garden next?
Robinson.
Okay, okay, I'm out of order. So it's the approval of the architect agreement for the design work associated with the replacement of the Robinson Fire Alarm System. Again, it's a 5% fee of the construction cost not to exceed $37,500. So, you know, if the construction cost comes in at $500,000, it'll be a $25,000 fee. It'll be based on 5%, but it won't exceed $37,500. So I'd recommend that the board approve this agreement.
Any questions? No? All righty. The recommended action is to enter in agreement with Holston Engineering for engineering design services for Ross and Robinson Middle School Fire Alarm Replacement Project for a cost not to exceed $37,500. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
And the final item I have for you is the approval of the Phase Two of the Architect Agreement with Thompson Litton for the design work associated with the demolition of the current facilities that are located at that site, and the design of the site work that has to take place at that site. The total contract, the total for the second phase would be $268,700. And we are looking at a total cost for this phase of this project of approximately $4 million. And I think we have a commitment from the City of Kingsport right now to fund the demolition, which will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 to $1 million. The remainder of those funds, I think that we'll have to pay for in the short term until the city sells that large bond issue in July of '27. And I'll just tell you right now, so when we, they're also going, this next bond issue that's coming up, they're also going to, including that bond issue, the funds for the Washington HVAC replacement, which will give us back about $3 million that we'll turn around and use for this.
Any discussion, questions? Okay. The recommended action is to enter into a contract with Thomas and Litton for Phase Two of the architectural services for the new elementary school in Lynn Garden for a lump sum fee of $268,700. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie's?
Thank you.
Mr. Frye?
Again, congratulations. Well deserved.
All right.
Dr. Hampton, do you have anything?
Just a few things, and then I actually share some of my time with Mr. Rowlett, if he will come up. He has an update for the board that he needs to share. While he's making his way, I just, again, to the staff at all of our reward schools and Level Five Growth Schools, just want to congratulate them because they've worked so very hard, and we've seen those numbers climb each year for the last several years. And to get to this point is very rewarding. We'll discuss it in January, but next year, we will get school letter grades. And those are embargoed currently, but we know that we're going to see some additional improvements in that category. So checking off another metric that's demonstrating improvement in student learning. We'll take the opportunity to congratulate Dr. Flora, is she still here, who was the East Grand Division Supervisor of the Year for the State of Tennessee? That was announced Saturday. Remarkable asset to our school system, and her fingerprints are all over the improvements that we've discussed earlier tonight. So it's great to have her as a colleague on our team. So congratulations to Dr. Flora. She would have preferred that I would not call her out. Also want to send a congratulations out to the Dobbins Bennett Band, competitive band. We have not met as a group since they performed at the Grand Nationals in Indianapolis in November, and they had another remarkable showing and a remarkable year, and were great ambassadors for the City of Kingsport. And so want to congratulate and recognize them. We have another recognition that has recently come out, I've shared with the board, but for the benefit of the listening audience, we've had several schools identified by U.S. News and World Report as high achievement schools, is focusing only on literacy and math achievement. Growth is not factored into this formula, and those schools are, and we'll recognize them at a later time as well, Dobbins Bennett, Ross and Robinson, Adams, Jefferson, Johnson, and Washington Elementary's. All those schools are in the top 25th percentile in the state of Tennessee. And then we have severe Lincoln and Roosevelt knocking on the door. Those three are very close. So there's so many remarkable things going on, and all of that magic is happening at the school level, and so very proud of them. For those who still have open spots in their evening calendars, you still have time to catch some very festive school plays, concerts, and art shows. Those are going on. I think we have, there are five things Thursday alone after 4:00. So some remarkable opportunity to see the talent of young people, and what a great way to spend an evening during this blessed time of the year. And then I'll close with wishing all of our families, students, faculty and staff, and supporters of Kingsport City Schools Merry Christmas, and all the best in 2026.
Thank you, Dr. Hampton. Some of our upcoming meetings, January 13th is our regular business meeting for January. The 27th will be our work session. February 10th will be our regular monthly meeting. Then on the 16th and 17th, some of us board members will probably be in Nashville for the Legislative and Legal Institute there that they have annually. And then our BOE work session in February will be on the 24th. So, anything else?
Oh! No, you're fine, Mr. President. So, something I wanted to make the board aware of, not anything that action has to be taken on by this body, but there will be an action that comes before the Board of Mayor Alderman at its December the 15th meeting regarding charter changes. One of those changes will ask the General Assembly to amend Article 14, Section 2 of the Charter, which relates to, among other things, how and when this body elects its president. It still references an election in July, which of course doesn't line up with the election since the election has been moved to August. And so that is going to be a proposed change to the Charter. The Charter is essentially a private act, so it requires action by the General Assembly to make that change. There's going to be a few other changes as well. For instance, the changing, the, making a similar change for the election of the vice mayor. Just need to update that so that it reflects a election in September instead of July. So wanted to make this body aware, and figured it would be easy to do that with all of you here, and answer any questions that you may have. But if you do see something about charter changes and impacting the Board of Education, know that that is the only change that is being made, is just lining up with the election of the president with the new election date, so.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to share a bit of good news. It's very informal, which is why I waited till the very end. I had a great conversation with Jennifer Walker, who's over school nutrition, and numbers and information will come out in the future, hopefully, January. But the free lunch, the free food program that she has kind of gotten going, you know, for the past, has operated in the red. Like, we had a hard time kind of getting that to be profitable, and the numbers are not lying. They're coming in, and they're, we're operating in the black. So I think there's going to be some more specifics brought up, but I know that was something that many of the board members had maybe been concerned about in the past, but that program is thriving, the students are eating, and our students are not hungry. And if any of you guys know that are parents, you know, a hangry child is not going to learn. So I really loved her passion and her team's passion to make, push that through, and now, and to get us to where we needed to be. So more information coming, but I was really encouraged, and, you know, after the budget amendments, this is a good news one.
Anybody else? We're adjourned. Roll tribe.